I'm Mayor Matt Girdon, called the November 12th, 2024 City Council Meeting for the City of Somersworth to Order. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Peppin.
Yep.
Vincent?
Excused.
Gibson?
Here.
Parity Catanzaro?
Here.
Micho?
Yeah.
Witham?
Here.
Goodwin?
Excused.
Cameron?
Yeah.
Barry?
Here.
All right, Counselor Gibson will lead the council on the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And actually, while we're all still standing, if we could actually please do a brief moment of silence for a former city councillor who has recently passed away a few weeks ago, Jennifer Soldati, that'd be much appreciated, so thank you. I also want to make note of a quick agenda item that's been added at the last minute. It will be under Other, Item E, which will be a vote to waive the excavation and paving moratorium for 155-157 High Street to perform gas utility work. Just for folks, again, apologies for the late addition. That brings us to Agenda Item Three, which is recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabook, the people who have stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item Four on the agenda are any scheduled public hearings. We have three tonight. First up is a public hearing for ordinance 10-25 to amend Chapter 13 Police Offenses, Section G, permit and reserved parking by adding parking spaces along Main Street permitted for parking during a declared snow emergency, which, if approved, would open up 17 parking spots along Noble Street, five along River Street, and 14 along Main Street for winter parking during snow emergencies. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight towards this ordinance? All right, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Next, we have a public hearing on ordinance 11-25, which is to amend Chapter 19 zoning ordinance, Section Three, establishment of zoning districts to create a Maple Street overlay district, and other supported amendments, which, if approved, would create and define the Maple Street Recreation Overlay District. Is there anyone who wishes to speak towards ordinance 11-25? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. And our last public hearing is on the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program application for Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for the redevelopment project at 5 Main Street, which, if approved, would freeze the tax abatement, or excuse me, tax assessment of the property for a period of up to seven years, as recommended by the Economic Development Committee, with the express purpose of enhancing economic activity and historic character in the downtown. Is there anyone who wishes to speak towards that this evening? Thank you, if you wouldn't mind saying your name and the ward in which you live.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again. Matt Hawkins, I don't live in Somersworth, but I own a lot of property in Somersworth. I love Somersworth, and that's why we bought the old police station. And as everything goes, it's more money and it takes more time. But we put this before you, we spent a lot of time, you know, looking at what we're going to do with the building, as you guys know, what we approved, which was some disabled veteran housing, which we're working through those back channels now, trying to find out what our best selection process is. We've also gonna have the indoor kids' playland, which is getting rave reviews, even though people have just seen plans, so we're super excited about that. And our biggest challenge has been finding a cold kitchen. So for anybody that's watching this, we're taking applications for a cold kitchen that wants to go there. Our idea is, we want to get kids into play in the indoor playground and get food for less than 20 bucks. So that's the goal. That's to help service the community, because I've got four kids and I can't take them anywhere for 20 bucks. And so we want to try and get afternoon fun as well as the food piece. But the application speaks for itself, we did a lot of in-depth work and research. We know that it's gonna create a lot of jobs, but more importantly, this is all money that we're reinvesting in the building and in the business. We're not looking for somebody to take over the business where my wife and I are gonna run the business for the playland, and make sure that it's everything that we want it to be for the community, and, you know, really be able to give back and, you know, give those grandparents that watch grandkids, single parents that have kids and they're cooped up in their apartments all winter long, and it's too hot sometimes in the summertime, give them another place to go where they can enjoy and run around and get some energy out and not be on an iPad or a phone. So I appreciate your consideration, but I wanted to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we can't do questions during the public hearing period. However, if councillors have questions when we pull your vote up to happen, we can suspend rolls at that time and then pull you back up.
Sure. Happy to. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Others wishing to speak towards the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program Seeing none, I will close that public hearing. All right, next up is Item Five, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to vote, or excuse me, voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speakers shall not enter into a debate with any persons, the mayor, city council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll jump to our next thing. I'm actually gonna kind of shift us through our agenda a bit, since we have some folks here for some of the votes that come under Other, so we're gonna jump to the votes under Other right now, if that's all right without objection. And then we'll come back to our regularly scheduled program. So our first vote under Other is a vote to re-adopt the City of Somersworth's investment policy. What are the wishes of the council? Counselor Witham?
Motion to adopt.
Counselor Witham moves to adopt the investment policy, seconded by Counselor Peppin. A motion for the council's on the re-adoption of the City of Somersworth investment policy discussion. City Manager?
I just mentioned that this was vetted through the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee recommends adopting without any change.
Thank you. Others? All right, seeing no discussion. If you are in favor of adopting the policy, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right, policy is adopted, thank you. Next up, we have a vote to waive excavation moratorium and paving moratorium for N. Greenwich &amp; Sons, Inc., to perform work for the Constitutional Way Utility and Roadway Reconstruction Complete Streets Project. What are the wishes of the council? Yes, Counselor Witham?
Move that we waive the moratorium.
Counselor Witham moves to support the waiver of the moratorium, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Motion for the council is to waive the excavation and paving moratoriums. Discussion? Yes, City Manager?
Yeah, I'll just read a brief statement that was included in my written report to council. I provided you a copy of a letter from N. Greenwich &amp; Sons requesting the waiver. They did send me in a revised letter today. Not only do they want the waiver for the Constitutional Way, but also along High Street. As you may recall, we're replacing some manhole covers along High Street all the way up to around the area of St. Clair, I think, or Stackpole. So we'd like to include that waiver also as part of this total waiver package. They're hopeful that they'll get work done fairly quickly and won't need much of that waiver to complete their work. And I did mention in my report that the Public Works Director and city staff will be monitoring the weather as this moves forward to make sure the appropriate weather is in effect and there's no significant accumulation of precipitation or freezing weather, which would hamper any work that's done in regards to both Constitutional Way and, you know, re-mortaring and rebuilding the manhole covers. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Witham, since you made the motion, would you be amendable to including High Street into your motion?
Yes.
Thank you. And seconded by Counselor Gibson, would you also be amendable? Thank you. All right, other discussion? Yes, Counselor Witham?
Thank you. I'll certainly support this, we want to get the work done. I will say that, personal observation, Greenwich &amp; Company has been, their efforts on Constitutional Way, I don't know what a better word is to use other than lackluster. I haven't kept track of the number of days that they've actually done work out there, but I'd argue that there have been as many days with no work done out there as there have been days with work done out there. So, again, this moratorium may be self-inflicted, I'll support it because I want to see work get done as much as we can before winter, but it's with a high degree of angst.
Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Gibson?
I'm in full agreement with Counselor Witham's comments. I drive that route on a regular basis, and it's very surprising their approach to the work.
Other discussion? All right, seeing none, if you are in favor of the waivers, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right, moratoriums are waived. Next up, we have, we have a few of these tonight, so bear with me. We have a vote to waive excavation moratorium to perform gas main installation work on Blackwater Road. What are the wishes of the council? Counselor Witham?
Move to waive the moratorium.
All right, Counselor Witham moves to waive the moratorium, seconded by Counselor Gibson. Motion for the council is to waive the excavation moratorium. Discussion? Yes, Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I'm gonna vote for this. We've talked about this in the past. I don't know who they have for a paving company, but it's absolutely despicable, if you ask me. I'm sorry. I live there, I watch what goes on. It's, I don't think it's the fault, maybe it is the fault of the gas company, I don't think it's the fault of the gas company. Their work is really good. But man, oh man, it's like, I just hope they dress Blackwater Road up, because I've seen some of the other work they've done, and to me, it's just been so-so. Maybe I'm a perfectionist, I don't know, I just think when you dig up a road, when you drive over the patch, you shouldn't feel it. And that's just my opinion, and, but I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Other discussion? Yes, Counselor Witham?
Thank you. I think current conditions, I'd agree with you, Counselor Vincent, the area on Blackwater Road, as you approach 108, the crossing on 108, surprised the state DOT is satisfactory with it. I do know that Unitil has, in the past, on some of the other work that was done closer to High Street on Blackwater Road, returned with a more appropriate milling and repaving. They redid the sidewalk on Maple Street, and I do find that their ultimate long-term repair was very satisfactory, but the initial patch does leave something to be desired. But I'm willing to do this, again, I think the work needs to get done, it's underway, and I think Unitil will hold true to their performance standards to return in the spring and fix any repairs that might be needed. Thank you.
Other discussion? All right, seeing none, if you are in favor of the waiver, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
All right, moratorium is waived, thank you. Next up, we have a vote to approve the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program application for Hawkins Family Revocable Trust for the redevelopment project at 5 Main Street, which is the former police station. What are the wishes of the council? Yes, Counselor Parity Catanzaro?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the Tax Relief Incentive Program application.
Would you, if you wouldn't mind, specify the years? Do you like to go with the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee of seven years?
Yes, seven years.
Okay, thank you. Looking for a second? Seconded by Counselor Barry. Again, the motion for the council is to approve the Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program for a period of seven years. Discussion, Counselor Witham?
I remember from the past, it's important that we articulate prior to our vote, either through the motion or through comment, why we would support this. I think the applicant makes a good case for the revitalization, sort of some unique infill there with regard to the uses. It would certainly take what is a, has been a longstanding blighted property that, you know, it's been vacant for god knows how long, and repurpose it into something that's more vibrant. It will provide for some amount of jobs, it will provide for some good community amenities, it will provide foot traffic in the downtown, which would support other businesses in the downtown. So those are some that immediately come to mind, and I'm sure we could come up with more, but I'd support that.
Yes, absolutely. Counselor Barry, and then Counselor Vincent?
Ditto to almost every comment that was just said. I also want to just kind of point out that, again, I think we've had a very hard time with this particular building. I don't like seeing things sit vacant for a very long time, so when we have someone who's willing to work and do work on these, I think we need to support them. And I think everything that was already stated is part of that, so.
Thank you. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to, once again, I'd like to paint the picture for people at home, and maybe just an overview, that what would, what would the tax be paid on the building right now?
Great question. It would be what it's currently assessed at, I don't know that. I'll turn it to the city manager to see if he has an answer for that.
They don't have that with me, Your Honor.
But it's, but just to, just to be clear, this is not a free ride. It's the current taxes, which was years ago, I guess. And why, I think why we do this is to help the developer get things moving, so to speak. There's a big investment here, and I understand that there's big investments in all buildings, but, yeah, I think it gives, it gives a break in. So the city's really not losing anything, per se, especially with developers that have a lot of property, and I was one of them, and so I think it's a good thing, and I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Parity Catanzaro?
Yes, agree with what's been said, and just from the perspective of the Economic Development Committee, we did support this, this is exactly what this tax relief program is made to do, and as has been said, this is gonna bring that building back online, being used, back paying some taxes, but just to give that incentive to make the investment and not tax on the additional value that comes for the first few years is the least we can do, and I want to thank the folks for taking on this project. I will be supporting this.
Great, thank you. City Manager, Belmar?
Yes, there was a memorandum from Director Mayors in your packet this evening. I'll just mention two things, because the rationale's already been spoken to already. The motion of seven years is five years because of the qualifying structure, and an additional two years for a project that results in new, non-subsidized residential units. So that gives you your seven. And then at the end of the memo, we do require the applicant to provide an escrow, so that we can have a legal review of a covenant that's registered at the Stratford County Registry of Deeds to ensure that the full seven years is engaged and is on record. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ready, Counselor Cameron, and then Counselor Witham?
Thank you, Your Honor. I will definitely be in support of this, I think, once the facility is done, it's gonna be a great space down there. But also, in the past, we've also been deemed very difficult to work with, and I think by doing some of this, it shows other developers that we, we are open to ideas and very easy to work with, so I'll be glad to see that project done for you.
Counselor Witham?
Yeah, a question for the city manager, and this is a very, I guess, just mechanical question. I'm glad to see that these, this tax relief is noted in the deed, so that it lasts, it's memorialized, if you will. But how do we keep track of it beyond that at the city level, so that we know when the seven-year mark is done? I mean, this has got to be number, maybe around a dozen of these reliefs that we've provided in the, in the greater downtown area. How do we know when we get to the finish line and that tax value then goes to what it should be?
City Manager, Belmar?
Yeah, the city assessor flags it and monitors it on a year-to-year basis. As you know, we just rescinded one, I think it was one of Baker's deals across the street. So we do track it, and we ensure that either the work's being done or the years are up.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
Okay.
Seeing none, if you are in favor of the tax relief for seven years, you will state by saying yes. If you are not, you'll state by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
All right, tax relief is approved. Thank you.
All right, now is the extra added item E, which is a vote to waive excavation paving moratorium for 155-157 High Street to perform gas utility work. I need to refuse myself, as this is my property, so I will turn it over to the deputy mayor. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Your Honor. The vote before you is for the excavation waiver for the moratorium for 155-157 High Street. Is there a motion? Counselor Barry?
I motion for estimate for this.
Is that a second?
Yep.
Seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. Seeing, City Manager?
Yeah, just that I would probably label this as an emergency, as the furnace is just about dead, and just point out that it is in the southbound lane, and usually Unitil will go onto the sidewalk, so it doesn't go all the way across the street, it's just in the southbound lane. Thank you.
Question that I have, I guess this applies to all the digging in city streets. Do we get a surety bond from, in this case, Unitil, so that, I'm seeing nodding heads here, so that the work is completed? And again, we're late in the season, if they have to come back in the spring, what have you?
Yeah, they have to do a trench permit, which has those requirements embedded in it, so there will be a trench permit and a surety bond, et cetera.
Got it. Further questions? Counselor Barry?
I should have asked this at the first one with the Unitil, but just like we kind of went after the pole installations, I like hearing that there is a bond, so if we need to force them to come back out and redo this, even if it's not, they think it's okay, but we don't, I would like to think that that's on our radar to do as well.
Further discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of waiving the moratorium, you'll signify by saying yes. If you are not, you'll signify by saying no. City Clerk, we'll call the roll.
Counselor Barry?
Yes.
Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Motion is adopted, the waiver is granted.
Thank you. Your mayor will not freeze this winter now.
Oh, darn.
All right, that will bring us back to...
I almost thought about tabling it, just to see how you react.
Watch me squirm. Like, huh. You could have run the rest of the meeting, it would have been fine. All right, that brings us to Item Six. Thank you for jumping to the others, so our guests could have their votes heard and make their way if they needed to. Item Six on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the city council meeting held on October 21st, 2024. Do I have a motion? Counselor Peppin?
I make a motion, except that it's presented, plus the addition that you had, does that need to be put in it?
Oh, the addition.
You had Section 11 added on to the agenda?
At that time. Oh, at the last meeting that we had, yes, we did add something, didn't we? It should be included in the minutes, was it not reflected?
No problem. Except that it has presented.
Okay. I was gonna say, if it wasn't reflected, we can absolutely include those. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Cameron. Question for the council is the adoption of the consent calendar. If you're in favor of the motion, you will state by saying aye. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes appear to have it. Eyes have it, consent calendar is adopted. Thank you. Item Seven on our agenda is comments by city councillors. Are there any comments by councillors this evening? Counselor Witham?
Yeah, just since it's thematic, instead of waiting until the end of the meeting, let me just continue down the, the bumpy row. So, spoke about N. Greenwich &amp; Sons, I did have the opportunity to stop by Public Works this afternoon and had a brief conversation with Director Babinski, just about my observations of the work on Constitutional Way. Again, just, in a word, just seems kind of lackluster. I'm sure at the end of the day, the end result of the product is gonna be good, we did check references, they've done work for a neighboring community, Dover, they continue to do work in Dover right now. I know they did work in Plymouth, New Hampshire, I happened to talk to the town manager up there, who spoke highly of their work. So I'm hopeful that the end product is going to be good, but just an observation, and again, I'm not in that business, but we see enough of it, right, that the site has generally been kind of messy, unkept, like, street sweeping and putting material away. And I'll just use last night as an example. The American Legion holds its annual Veterans Day ceremony, that happens every year on November 11th, and the sidewalk was very difficult to navigate to get in. I had to pay attention, but there are people that are attending that event that are 90-plus years old, and it was difficult at best. It's just that situational awareness, and again, just a neatness and just forward-leaning attitude by the contractor that I just haven't witnessed at the end of the day. I was assured by the director that the sidewalks, they've started to work on those, and maybe might be beginning to pour those by the end of the week, those will be concrete sidewalks, but the, the travel roadway is gonna be like you see it now until next spring. I am very concerned, I know it's temporary, but the patch that happened on Washington Street for the better part of a week or two, it was recessed. They've now paved that section, and it's now sort of a speed hump. It's like, all right, we've gone from one extreme to the other, and I understand that it's temporary, but that's gonna create its own plowing challenges in the wintertime, and again, just, I think we need to do better, so it's just, it's a lament, I know, right? I'm gonna cross the street now, and let's go over to Elm Street. So, the Elm Street apartment project that spans between Elm Street and Green Street has been underway now for quite some time. I have to tell you, as a planning board member, I don't recall any conversation of the need to do the amount of excavation that they've done on Elm Street. The trench is more than half the width of the roadway, but it's in the middle of the roadway. I suspect it's gonna be sort of a trench patch, which is gonna be terrible. Hopefully, they don't hire N. Greenwich to pave it, because we've already seen their work, right? I think we need to revisit that at the planning board level, if that's, I think it needs additional consideration for their work on Elm Street. I would lobby for that. I think it's an additional scope of work that we did not recognize, because it was not announced to us, that we probably could have leveraged the contractor to repave at least up to the end of that trench, and not have this ginormous trench patch. If we have to live with the patch, I hope that we hold the contractor accountable for saw cuts straight on each side, because what's there has been problematic. That site as well has not been particularly well-maintained, there's a lot of runoff, road debris, the dust from Elm Street, and I know we've had a dry stretch, has not been managed particularly well. I believe they are in violation of the site plan conditions of approval in many aspects, so I would hope that either Public Works planning staff, staff in general, can look at that and hold the developer accountable, and if not the developer, at least their subcontractor, which I believe is S U R in that case there. So, one councillor, a general dissatisfaction with what's going on within a couple of block area of the downtown, thank you for allowing me to lament.
Absolutely. Other councillor comments this evening? Seeing none? Oh, yes, I apologize. Counselor Gibson?
Yeah, I want a second. Counselor Witham's comments about that brings a question to mind to me. If they're cutting into the street, didn't they have to get a trenching permit and so forth before they did that, which would have had to have been subject to rules and conditions of the city? I don't know. That's not my area of expertise. The only other thing I want to say is the elections are over. Thank God. Lifelong Democrat. So, I wasn't very happy with the outcome of the elections across the board. But I will say this, as a lifelong Democrat, we got what we deserved. Because the Democratic Party for years has been splintered into different factions, and everybody spends all their time trying to make sure that everybody is happy instead of coming up with a coherent policy that appeals to the broad spectrum of voters, which is why we've been losing the middle-income, working-class individuals in this country from the Democratic Party. I mean, you have issues that you would have thought maybe might have carried the party. But the bottom line is nobody really said anything to address what the average person in the street is concerned about. And just because you think the other guy is a bad man is not necessarily a reason to vote against him. Because there've been a lot of bad men that have done good things. And I think that for a lot of people, that was the chance that they were willing to take. And you can't have a coastal party, which is what the Democratic Party has become. We control the coasts, and so what if the rest of the country is there? Seems to be the philosophy of the party. And if the people in charge of the party don't start facing that reality, like the last disaster previous to this, when there were three very conservative justices nominated and approved for the Supreme Court, because all those little states that nobody in our party seems to care about happen to have two senators apiece, and guess what? They're all Republicans. So, maybe that Republican is what those people like, but maybe it's the fact that our party as Democrats aren't doing enough for the average guy to feel confident in what our party represents. So, just hoping everything turns out well over the next four years in general. And whether you like the man or not, he is the president, and you have to respect the choice of the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments by councillors? Counselor Barry?
I was gonna wait, but I feel like it will get lost in my closing comments, so I'll just bring it up now. Since we did just vote on doing a tax incentive for the downtown, I just wanted to make sure that I welcomed Third Space Bakery is now open in our downtown. I've actually been able to sample some of their goods. Very good. I highly recommend you go check them out if you haven't. And also, I also know there's a new thrift store that has opened in the downtown, which I'm looking very much forward to going. I was just telling another councillor, I was spending most of my weekend thrifting. So, I just wanted to make sure I took the time to welcome some of our newer downtown, and hopefully, everybody starts getting over there and welcoming and also helping support them.
Thank you. Other comments by councillors? Seeing none. We'll move on to agenda item eight, which is communications. We have none. Brings us to agenda item nine, which is presentations of petitions and disposal thereof or otherwise. We have none. And then that brings us to agenda item 10, which is my mayor's report. First up, I'd like to start by thanking city clerk and all those who work in the clerk's office and all of our election workers for what was a very, very, very busy election. So, thank you. I can only imagine how long the night was, my God. We all got to go to bed and wake up to the election news. Sadly, they had to stay here and work through the night to get it all so that it could make the news. But yes, thank you for everything you did. Thank you to our election workers for what I'm sure was an exhausting day, you know, dealing with probably some happy people, some so not maybe. But overall, it sounded like the elections went really, really smooth. Once again, we show that we can have safe and secure elections here in the city and across the state. So, really cannot thank you enough. Next, I am also pleased to announce this evening the creation of a new mayoral committee, which I'll be calling the Summersworth High School Fields Committee. There's been much discussion from various community members and organizations for many years. In fact, there's committees from years ago that did this exact same thing, that talked about renovating and updating the fields and grounds outside the high school. There have, you know, been studies done in the past, funds dedicated to make projects happen, but as of yet, there's been no real action taken. I would like the city to finally do something about this and maybe bring our fields into the 21st century. And certainly, I think that our community values our athletic programs. We have a football team that has won the state champs, or have been state champs for three years in a row. We, you know, have stands sadly that can't really handle the crowds that come and watch their games. We also have a track team that is the single largest sporting program, athletic program offered at the high school with no track to practice on or use for meets. We also have a soccer field with no lights or no stands for spectators. And so, honestly, I feel like these things are kind of unacceptable. I think a lot of people feel this way, and especially for a community that prides itself in its athletics and its programs. As an educator, I certainly know the true value of sports. Also, as a parent, I know the true value of sports. It's not only for the students, but I also think that there's a real community value at large. I think our tougher pride runs really deep, and I think that many would agree that our sporting events are some of the busiest, most well-attended events that the city has. So, I think it's about time we start figuring out ways to improve these facilities and have them mirror kind of the same amount of pride that we have for our students and our families and our teams. So, first and foremost, I want to explain some of the goals of the committee. These goals will include, but certainly are not limited to, making recommendations to the school board and the city council about any necessary updates to the football soccer fields at the high school, updates to the concessions, the press box, the stands, examining potential locations of track or track elements, and determining whether that's even an option for, based on the space that we have. And any certainly associated improvements to the high school and surrounding area that would need to be done to facilitate these upgrades. Also task out that the committee determine kind of the community needs, so determine whether, like what and how these things need to be done, and certainly all the elements that go with it. Like if we do decide to update the fields, do we want to go turf? Do we want to keep it as grass? Like, there's so many minutia that needs to be determined as well, so I'm hoping this committee can go through that. They can do cost assessments, determine the appropriate boards and committees, or whether it be us or the school board, that then would need to take on financing for this project. And I also ask that the committee work to certainly identify financing partners and opportunities within the community or New Hampshire to raise funds for this project. Now, certainly, I want to be clear, I would not do this without speaking to the superintendent of the Summersworth Schools and the chair of the school board, both of whom were in with me on this discussion and figuring out how we should move this forward. We all agreed that because of the scope of this project, the committee needed to include stakeholders not just from within the schools, but also from city council and from the community at large. And so, we figured that a mayoral committee would be the best suited to begin examining this and forwarding things to the appropriate locations to make sure that these potential upgrades occur. So, without further ado, the committee will consist of the following. It will be the mayor or their designee. Our chair will be Counselor Witham. He'll be the city council representative on that committee. There will be a representative from the school board, which will be appointed by the school board. The superintendent or their designee will be on. The Summersworth High School football coach, Jeremy Lambert, has agreed to join. Summersworth Athletic Director and Track Coach, Steve Hodgson, has joined, or has agreed to join. We'll have a representative from the Summersworth Football Booster Program, which will be chosen by the booster program. They'll send their representative. Also, a representative from the Summersworth Festival Association, which will be chosen by the S H, excuse me, S F A. And then, the Summersworth Facilities Director, Jay Lilly, will also be a part of that committee. So, hopefully, the committee can get meeting maybe within the next month. I'll chat with our chair and see if we can find a time to get things rolling, and hopefully we'll have some updates to come down the road. But that's pretty much it and concludes my mayor's report. Thank you. Brings us to agenda item 11, which is reports of standing committees. Finance committee chairman, with him. Will you please report out?
Yes. Excuse me, thank you. Finance committee met on October 24th. We had a committee of three. In addition to Counselor Peppin and myself, Counselor Michu was a special mayoral appointment so that we would have a quorum for the meeting and so that it could proceed. First item on our agenda was a discussion of supplemental appropriation for Coast Bus. Counselor Parity Catanzaro raised this sort of request, boy, a number of months ago now, councillor, and I do apologize that it took us so long to get to here. When we finally got it on our agenda, Rad Nichols from Coast was unavailable. He was traveling, so it got pushed off a little bit more, so apologies there. But we finally got together with Rad Nichols, the executive director of Coast, and he explained that Coast had a funding shortfall for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is that one-time money that came as a result of COVID and other funding streams has gone away. As you know, although we did increase our funding amount during our past budget cycle, it fell well short of their request. And because of the funding shortfall, Coast was in a position to look at some sort of service reduction here in Summersworth to make up for the funding shortfall. Elements that were under consideration by Coast are elimination of the four round trips on Route 1 in the afternoon. So, basically, it would be every other hour instead of every hour on that route. That would save about $109,000, but it would be a significant service interruption. Imagine having to wait two hours for a bus. Would be challenging for those folks that depend on that type of service. They looked at some other avenues, streamlining service on the High Street route, but that had no significant cost savings, but would have significant interruption to users of that route. And again, just changing service needs, but there were service interruptions that would couple along with that. So, pretty robust discussion with Rad Nichols about this. At the end of the day, the finance committee agrees with a supplemental appropriation request that would be funded from our municipal transportation fund. We have enough money in there to fund it to meet the full request this year. One of the things that we did try to forecast with Rad is what would be the next funding request for the FY '26 budget, which will begin taking up in the spring. He did not see the increase being as dramatic as it was this past year because those, he was making up for those one-time funding shortfalls that were there. So, we're hopeful that the increase will not be as much going for FY '26. But again, we'd have to visit that as part of our budget deliberation. But we're just at that point in the road, if you will, where either we fund it or we're going to have to reduce service, right? It comes down to those two choices. And we thought, at least in the short term, the municipal transportation fund can get us over that hurdle. So, there is a, both a resolution and an ordinance. The ordinance is the supplemental appropriation to move this forward, which would likely need a public hearing, I believe, at our December meeting. Rad Nichols, I did ask if he could attend the December meeting when that action item would be up, and he assured me that, barring any type of conflict, that he would be there for that. We had a discussion on funding of Flynn Street. As I reported out in a prior report out of, I believe, the Public Works and Environment Committee, Flynn Street is in a state of significant disrepair. We compared the cost for an aggressive shim and overlay, which is the cheaper alternative versus a full reconstruction. The dollars amount are within 20 grand or so of each other. The committee felt to have a value of life of the road for some 10 to 20 years because it's a very low-traveled road, that it makes sense to reconstruct this and to bond it. We would likely bond it along with Willand Drive, which is a bondable project. So, coupling those two things together seemed to make the most sense versus a rather expensive Band-Aid, if you will. So, the recommendation of the finance committee is to move forward with a rehabilitation of Flynn Street and to bond that along with Willand Drive when we do that road project in the spring. That was supported unanimously. There was discussion, I know Counselor Peppin had asked about a culvert that's out there if that needs to be replaced, to weave that into this project and just be done with Flynn Street for the foreseeable future. City manager brought us up to speed on a failed HVAC unit at the wastewater treatment plant. This unit is actually over the lab and kind of the office areas of that building. It needs to be replaced, as you might well imagine, just the nature of what is done there. The quote for the lowest bidder for the replacement of this unit, which would be a crane-lifted unit to replace the unit that's already on top of the roof, is wicked cool mechanical. I did not come up with the name, at a price of a little over $59,000, almost $60,000. Council committee supports this unanimously in an amount not to exceed $70,000. So, we're putting in a little bit of contingency there. And again, we have that resolution on our agenda tonight for first reading. We already talked about the investment policy which passed, so I can skim over that. The next item is the proceeds from the sale of the National Guard property. Basically, a discussion of when that sale actually gets finalized, what to do with those monies. Would we just put them into the general fund, or would we direct them to some specified project? It's the recommendation of staff and also of the committee that we dedicate these funds, at least for the time being, towards the recreational conversion project. So, again, backstory, we've talked about St. Laurent Park, the old St. Laurent Park, which is on top of the Superfund site. City council has decommissioned that through vote, the St. Laurent Park. It's no longer a park. But apparently, there was a restriction placed at the time the park was constructed. It was constructed with some grant funds, and this was just identified recently by the state, that because we decommissioned a recreation area that was at least in part grant-funded, we now have to make up for that lost recreational space. City staff is exploring a number of alternatives to do that. There would likely be a cost associated with that. And there seemed to be a nexus between the sale of this property as it's next door to the site. It just seemed to make sense so that there wouldn't be significant impact to the, either dipping into the general fund or funding it through our operating budget. So, recommendation of the committee is to proceed with using the sale of that property towards the conversion project, if you will. Nothing formal yet, but it's thought, if you will. Under reporting, the only thing that we're watching, at least out of the gate, is the police department overtime. They had five new officers that were in the academy. They're now out of the academy. They're in field training, so those cars are doubled up. We're not terribly concerned, but it's an area that we're watching right now. It's sort of a good news report, right? It shows that we have better staffing than we've had in a long time in the police department, which is creating this, at least blip. which is creating this, at least blip on the radar screen. And I think that'll conclude my report.
I have a question, Your Honor. Could you, for the people at home, just give me the supplemental appropriation for the Coast Bus? Do you have a number on that?
Yes, I do. Sorry if I didn't say that. $70,073.
Thank you.
And that would bring it up to the full amount that was requested during the original budget process.
Thank you. Next up is Government Operations Committee Chairman Mishu.
One quick question. The recreational conversion, what are the costs associated with that?
We're not entirely sure yet, but we have to create some new recreation space. That may be a playground, it may be a tennis court, maybe a pickleball court. We'd have to invest in some additional recreation opportunities that were eliminated as a result of closure of the park over the Superfund site.
Okay, because all I remember ever being there was basketball court.
There was a series of basketball courts, there was a large and small baseball field, there were four tennis courts, a recreation building, and a playground.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Government Operations Committee Chairman Mishu.
Thank you. We have not met yet, but we will be meeting tomorrow, November 13th, here at City Hall in the Executive Conference Room at 4:30.
Thank you. Next is Economic Development Committee Vice Chair, Mishu, since our chairman is not here. For Economic Development Committee Chairman, Goodwin's not here. I believe you're our vice chair for Economic Development. Do you have a report for that?
I don't have a report on that.
No worries. Next is Public Safety Committee Chairman Pepin.
I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Public Works in the Environment Committee Chairman Witham.
Thank you. We have not met, but there's a few things percolating for an agenda, so I'm expecting the committee will be meeting in the coming weeks.
Thank you. And lastly, Recreation Committee Chairwoman Cameron.
We have not met, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Brings us to item 12, which is reports of special committees. Are there any reports of special committees this evening? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to the city manager to deliver his manager's report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Members of council, a few comments that were included in my written report to council. Let's see, a lot of it's been already mentioned by the Finance Committee Chair in regards to the HVAC. I don't think there's anything to add for that. Again, for resolution, that's Resolution 1725. For a resolution, 1825, in regards to the Coast supplemental appropriation, the resolution to take it out of Municipal and Transportation Fund. As of last time I checked with Finance, we had $86,748 in that particular dedicated Let's see. I did provide you memorandums in regards to the various road projects that we have and the included costs provided by either the city engineer or the Public Works Director. Your Honor, under Resolution 1925, to repurpose funds available from the bond issued for Cemetery Road Complete Streets Project, to repurpose it to the High Street Sidewalk Recreation Project. As well as Resolution 2125, the City Council votes to authorize the bond to reconstruct Willand Drive and Flynn Street. Both of these particular action items will need a public hearing, Your Honor, and our next regular meeting is December 9th. It's a Monday at 7:00 PM.
Yep, without objection.
And that would conclude my report, Your Honor. Well, I would mention, in regards to the HVAC, we did receive four bids, and we did provide, get a favorable reference for Wicked Cool, as the chair of the committee mentioned. And I would also mention that we did budget in the, this particular fiscal year's budget, $100,000 for that project, so we're well under what we had budgeted. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right, brings us to agenda item 13, which is nominations, appointments, and elections. Under nominations, appointments, and elections, in accordance with Council Rule 17, appointments the following are being nominated this evening. Bonnie McNair for appointment to the, as member of the planning board for a term of three years. Pointee will stand in nomination until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Brings us to item 14, which is items that have been laid upon the table. I have none. Brings us to item 15, which is unfinished business. First up, we have our ordinances. The chair will recognize the clerk for a second reading on ordinance 10-25 to amend Chapter 13, Police Offenses, Section G, Permit and Reserve Parking by adding parking spaces along Main Street permitted for parking during a declared snow emergency, which if approved, would open up 17 parking spots along Noble Street, five along River, and 14 along Main Street for winter parking during snow emergencies. City Clerk.
Ordinance number 1025, to amend Chapter 13, Police Offenses, Section G, Permit and Reserved Parking by adding parking spaces along Main Street permitted for parking during a declared snow emergency.
Thank you. Ordinance 10-25, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendments. Seeing no amendments, I will look for a motion on ordinance 10-25, councillor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Councillor Witham moves for the adoption of ordinance 10-25, seconded by councillor Parity Catanzaro. Discussion. Yes, councillor Witham.
Just as a reminder, I know we've talked about it ad nauseam at the committee level, but just that we want professional signs made for all three spots. Noble Street and River Street have been in use for a number of years now in this capacity relatively successfully, but with barricades that blow over, we've agreed to spend the money on proper signage along with the Main Street, so I just want to make sure that doesn't get lost in the translation here.
Great, thank you. Other discussion, councillor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. What's the permit parking cost again there?
Turn it over to the city manager. I don't know off the top of my head.
All these questions, I'm sorry, Bob. He's digging his paperwork now, looking at him. He sounded really sweat.
I don't know, maybe somebody could help me out. It was $20 per month, that's what it was.
What a bargain.
Yeah, it's a bargain.
It is, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Other discussion. Seeing none, if you are in favor of the adoption of ordinance 10-25, you'll stay by saying yes. If you are not, you'll stay by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Witham.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Pepin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro.
Yes.
Misho.
Yes.
Right, ordinance 10-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on ordinance 11-25, which is to amend Chapter 19, Zoning Ordinance, Section 3, Establishment of a Zoning District to Create the Maple Street Overlay District and Other Supporting Amendments, which if approved, would create and define the Maple Street Recreation Overlay District. City Clerk.
Ordinance number 1125, to amend Chapter 19, Zoning Ordinance, Section 3, Establishment of Zoning District to Create the Maple Street Recreation Overlay District and Other Supporting Amendments.
Thank you. Ordinance 11-25, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendments. Seeing none, I will look for a motion on ordinance 11-25. Yes, councillor Pepin.
I will look for adoption of 11-25 ordinance.
Councillor Pepin moves for the adoption of ordinance 11-25, seconded by councillor Gibson. Motion for the councils on the adoption of ordinance 11-25. Discussion, councillor Witham.
Yeah, just a question for the city manager, this and the resolution to immediately follow here, are those the last two, I'll call them at least significant hurdles between now and the sale of the properties, is that?
Question, city manager.
I'm trying to think what other issues. I think there's just a smaller issue of getting an access easement, because we'll keep a monitoring well next to the lodge maintenance facility. So I think we're pretty close to being home free. Well, we got to do a subdivision for the ballfield also.
Got it. But all those things are in motion, if you will.
Yes, yes.
Other discussion. Seeing none, if you are in favor of the adoption of ordinance 11-25, you'll stay by saying yes. If you are not, you'll stay by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Misho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Pepin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro.
Yes.
All right, ordinance 11-25 has been adopted. Brings us to our resolutions. Under Old Business, the chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 16-25 to authorize the city manager to acquire property adjacent to the former National Guard Readiness Center off Blackwater Road via lot line adjustment with Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as Eversource, which if approved, would allow the city to acquire a portion of the right-of-way formerly known as Maple Street Extension from Eversource in order to convey ownership to Kenneth Scarpetti and Douglas Anderson, who are the new owners of the former National Guard Readiness Center. City Clerk.
Resolution number 1625, to authorize the city manager to acquire property adjacent to the former National Guard Readiness Center off Blackwater Road via a lot line adjustment with Public Service Company of New Hampshire doing business as Eversource.
Thank you. Resolution 16-25, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendments. Seeing no amendments, I'll be looking for a motion on Resolution 16-25. Councillor Pepin.
Move to adopt Resolution 1625.
Councillor Pepin moves for the adoption of Resolution 1625, seconded by councillor Vincent. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 16-25. Seeing none, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 16-25, you'll stay by saying yes. If you are not, you'll stay by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Pepin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro.
Yes.
Misho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro.
Yes.
All right, resolution 16-25 has been adopted. Brings us to agenda item 16, which is our new business. We'll start with our ordinances. The chair will recognize the clerk for a first reading on ordinance 12-25, which is the supplemental appropriation to provide funding to Cooperative Alliance for Seacoast Transportation, also known as Coast. City Clerk.
Ordinance number 1225, supplemental appropriation to provide funding to Cooperative Alliance for Seacoast Transportation Coast, November 12th, 2024. The City of Summersworth ordains that pursuant to Section 7.7A of the City Charter, the annual budget for the City of Summersworth for fiscal year 2024-2025 is amended as follows. Appropriate $70,783 from the Municipal and Transportation Fund to the Community Services Budget as follows. Budget: $188,495. Amendment: $70,783. Revised Budget: $259,278. Approved as to funding, Scott A. Smith, Director of Finance and Administration, recorded by Kristen LePann, City Clerk. Background: This ordinance appropriates funding from the Municipal and Transportation Fund to increase the local support to Coast. Coast requested $177,778 from the city and the actual support from the fiscal year 2024-2025 adopted budget is $106,995. This supplemental appropriation will fully fund the local support request from Coast for fiscal year 2025. This ordinance requires a public hearing and requires a two-thirds majority vote of the city council after the public hearing, subject to Section 7.4.1 and Section 7.7A of the City Charter. Sponsored by councilors David A. Witham, Martin Pepin, Richard Misho, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Ordinance 12-25, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time a public hearing will be held. The chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on ordinance 13-25.
Your Honor, if I may, I'd like to move the suspend council rules to vote on this, to have this read by title only.
Yes. Again, the motion is to suspend council rules to read ordinance 13-25 by title only, seconded by councillor Mishu. If you are in favor of the suspension of council rules, you will vote by saying yes. If you are opposed, you'll stay by now saying no. All those in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? All right, looks like we will read by title only, thank you. City Clerk.
Ordinance number 1325, city council meeting schedule for 2025.
Thank you. Ordinance 13-25, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time a public hearing will be held. Brings us to our resolutions. Under New Business, the chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 17-25 to authorize the city manager to contract with Wicked Cool Mechanical LLC of Meredith, New Hampshire for the purchase and installation of HVAC equipment at the wastewater treatment facility. City Clerk.
Resolution number 1725, to authorize the city manager to contract with Wicked Cool Mechanical LLC of Meredith, New Hampshire for the purchase and installation of HVAC equipment at the wastewater treatment facility, November 12th, 2024. Whereas, the fiscal year 2024-2025 adopted budget includes an appropriation for the replacement of HVAC equipment at the wastewater treatment facility. And whereas, city staff received bids from qualified contractors for this project and recommends awarding the contract to Wicked Cool Mechanical of Meredith, New Hampshire for $59,878. And whereas, the Finance Committee has reviewed the proposals with city staff and supports the recommendation to award the contract to Wicked Cool Mechanical for $59,878 and recommends including a contingency of $10,122. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Summersworth, that the city manager is authorized to enter a contract with Wicked Cool Mechanical of Meredith, New Hampshire for the purchase and installation of HVAC equipment at the wastewater treatment facility for an amount of $59,878. And be it further resolved by the city council of the City of Summersworth, that the city manager may increase the contract by an additional $10,122 for contingencies to an amount not to exceed $70,000, and may take any additional action relative to this contract determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by councilors David A. Witham, Martin Pepin, Richard Misho, approved city attorney.
Councillor Witham.
I'd like to move that we waive council rules for a second reading this evening.
All right, councillor Witham makes for a motion to suspend rules for a second reading on Resolution 17-25, seconded by councillor Vincent. Question for the council is the suspension of council rules for a second reading on Resolution 17-25. Discussion, councillor Witham.
Pretty straightforward. This is a budgeted item, it's been reported out by committee. Might as well get the work in progress before we get into really bad weather.
Sounds good. Other discussion. Seeing none, if you are in favor of the motion, you'll stay by saying aye. If you are opposed, you'll stay by saying no. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, as have it. Motion passes, we will read the Resolution 17-25 a second time. City Clerk.
Resolution number 1725, to authorize the city manager to contract with Wicked Cool Mechanical LLC of Meredith, New Hampshire for the purchase and installation of HVAC equipment at the wastewater treatment facility.
Thank you. Resolution 17-25, having been read a first and now second time, is open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment, look for a motion on Resolution 17-25. Councillor Witham.
Move for its adoption.
Councillor Witham moves for the adoption of Resolution 17-25, seconded by councillor Cameron. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 17-25. Discussion. Okay, seeing none, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 17-25, you'll stay by saying yes. If you are not, you'll stay by saying no. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councillor Witham.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Pepin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Parity Catanzaro.
Yes.
Misho.
Yes.
Resolution 17-25 has been adopted. Thank you. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 18-25, which is to authorize the city to use funding from the Municipal and Transportation Fund as local support for Cooperative Alliance for Seacoast Transportation, also known as Coast. City Clerk.
Resolution number 1825, to authorize the city to use funding from the Municipal and Transportation Fund as local support for Cooperative Alliance for Seacoast Transportation Coast, November 12th, 2024. Whereas, the fiscal year 2024-2025 adopted budget includes an appropriation in the amount of $106,995 in the community support section of the budget as local support for Coast. And whereas, Coast funding request during the development of the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget was $177,778. And whereas, Coast is reviewing a service reduction option to address the lack of funding and has asked the city to reconsider the amount the city has provided for local support. And whereas, the city council would like to avoid any service reductions and intends to utilize the Municipal and Transportation Fund to fully fund the local support amount. And whereas, the city council is designated as agents to expend these funds. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the City of Summersworth, that the city may utilize $70,783 from the Municipal and Transportation Fund to increase the total local support to Coast to an amount of $177,778. Sponsored by councilors David A. Witham, Martin Pepin, Richard Misho, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 18-25, having been read a first and second, excuse me, a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 19-25, which is a vote to repurpose funds available for the bond issued for the Cemetery Road Complete Streets Project for the High Street Sidewalk Reconstruction Project. City Clerk.
Resolution number 1925, vote to repurpose funds available from the bond issued for the Cemetery Road Complete Streets Project for the High Street Sidewalk Reconstruction Project, November 12th, 2024. in the amount of $3,800,000 for road, sidewalk, drainage, water, sewer, and other improvements to Cemetery Road, the Cemetery Road Project. And whereas, the city issued $3,767,500 general obligation bonds dated February 11, 2021 to finance the Cemetery Road Project. And whereas, the Cemetery Road Project has been completed and the total cost is under budget and realized a balance available of $236,332. And whereas, the city is currently under contract with CMA Engineers to provide engineering services for the design to reconstruct the West Side sidewalk on High Street from West High Street to the vicinity of South Street and anticipates that project, the High Street Project, will begin in the spring of 2025. And whereas, the city would like to utilize the balance available of $236,332 from the bond issued for the Cemetery Road Project for the High Street Project. And whereas, a two-thirds vote of the City Council is required by New Hampshire RSA 33:3-A1 to repurpose bond funds. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the city shall use the funds available from the bond issued for the Cemetery Road Project for the High Street Project. Sponsored by Counselors David A. Witham, Martin Peppin, Richard Micho, approved City Attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 19-25 having been read a first time will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing for this as well. Brings us to Resolution 20-25, which is to authorize the City Manager to prepare bid specifications for the roads resurfacing and associated repairs of selected streets. City Clerk, will you please do a first reading?
Resolution number 2025, to authorize the City Manager to prepare bid specifications for road resurfacing and associated repairs of selected streets, November 12, 2024. Whereas, the City of Somersworth's capital improvement plan recommends road resurfacing and other general maintenance of streets throughout the city. And whereas, the city has prioritized street repair using the Pavement Condition Index Assessment Tool. And whereas, the Public Works and Environment Committee reviewed the list of streets provided by the staff based on the pavement condition analysis and supports the following recommendations: High Street, South Street to Washington Street, Mill Overlay; Woodchuck Lane, Shim Overlay; Granite Way, Shim Overlay. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that the City Manager is authorized to prepare bid specifications and solicit bids from qualified contractors for road resurfacing and associated repairs of the aforementioned streets and take any other actions relative to this project determined to be in the best interest of the city. Sponsored by Counselors David A. Witham, Martin Peppin, Laura Barry, Richard Micho, approved City Attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 20-25 having been read a first time will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Chair recognizes the Clerk for a first reading on Resolution 21-25, which is City Council Vote to Authorize a Bond to Reconstruct Will and Drive and Flynn Street. City Clerk?
Resolution number 2125, City Council Vote to Authorize a Bond to Reconstruct Will and Drive and Flynn Street, November 12, 2024. Whereas, the city intends to reconstruct Will and Drive and Flynn Street as part of the city's road improvement projects during 2025. And whereas, the project costs include the reconstruction of the roadways, drainage improvements, and other ancillary costs associated with the road reconstruction projects. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Somersworth that an amount not to exceed $1,260,000 is appropriated to reconstruct Will and Drive and Flynn Street. And be it further resolved that the City Manager is authorized to borrow up to $1,260,000 under the Municipal Finance Act and to issue bonds and notes payable within 10 years from their dates. And the City Manager is authorized to issue temporary notes in anticipation of the issue of these bonds or notes. And the City Manager is authorized to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project. And the estimated useful life of this project is expected to exceed 10 years. This resolution requires a public hearing and requires a two-thirds majority vote of the City Council after the public hearing, subject to Section 7.12 and Section 7.13 of the City Charter. Sponsored by Counselors David A. Witham, Martin Peppin, Laura Barry, Richard Micho, approved City Attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 21-25 having been read a first time will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing. We have completed all of our others. So it actually brings us to Agenda Item 17, which is comments by visitors. The City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Rules 7-C, time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any person, the mayor, council members, City Manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Again, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and where you live.
Matt Hawkins. I live in Rollins, but I own property in Somersworth. Thank you guys for your continued support for this project. It's important to me. It's going to be important to the city. So we're excited to do that. And Somersworth does have that reputation of being difficult to work with. Send them my way. I'm happy to talk to them about it and let them know. You guys are reasonable. You've been very fair. And so I appreciate the continued support on the project. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 18, which is closing comments by Counselors. And if you remember, I'm now rotating between you all to who starts. So Counselor Vincent, you're up first tonight.
Well, thank you. Counselor Vincent has nothing to say. Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Counselor Gibson, you are next.
Appreciate the thank you from Mr. Hawkins. I think that the city has changed a lot over the years. And the one thing that I would say that I would want to keep in mind going forward, development is important, but it needs to be tempered with maintaining our character and not losing ourselves to the desire for that development. The one concern I have, we have a lot going on as far as residential construction. We do have some commercial projects going forward. But the... I think we need a plan going forward of how to get the downtown area more of an attraction to people. You can build apartments all you want, but if there's nothing to draw the people into the downtown, your downtown's still going to be an issue. And all you have to do is look at Main Street, and that's a pretty rough section. And so I don't know how you do that, but you need a symbiotic relationship between residential development and commercial development. And I think we need to start looking at ways to enhance the prospects for that. So that's my bid.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Parity Cottenzero?
No comments this evening.
Counselor Michu?
No comment.
All right, thank you. Counselor Witham?
Thank you. Just a few quick ones. Appreciate the moment of silence for former Counselor Jen Soldati. She and I served side by side for a number of years. We had some pretty spirited debates. I'll use the word spirited. We did not always see eye to eye on every issue. We saw eye to eye on many. But the best thing about it is that we could agree to disagree. I was always flattered when it came time to run for office that she would want me to put a sign on her street. And I used to say, Jen, you live on Pleasant Street. Nobody drives there. And she would argue that they do. So I always obligated and put a sign there. But condolences to her family for the loss of Jennifer. Congratulations to the Somersworth High Volleyball Team, state champions in Division II. They beat Milford High School this past weekend. Having never gone to a volleyball game before, I stood in for the voice of Somersworth, Mr. Eric Momson, to announce their first round playoff game. I was very much a fish out of water because I did not know anything about the sport, but I learned quickly. And let me tell you, these young ladies are very, very athletic. The way they dominated the court, I guess is what you call it, I was pretty impressed by the whole thing. So I'll be sure to take in more of those in the future. Lastly, I will be away next week for a few days, which means I will miss the planning board meeting. So I'm using this as an opportunity to request that Counselor Vincent, as my alternate, perhaps could stand in next Wednesday. So thank you for that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Counselor Cameron?
Thank you, Your Honor. And speaking about Jen, I'll just share that I did have an opportunity to spend time with her before she passed, and she was spirited right up until her last breath. I can share that with everybody, but it was a nice gift she gave me to let me see her before she did pass. The Christmas parade is going to be December 7. It's... What? Yes, there is. There is going to be a parade. And it's called Winter Wonderland. It will start at 1:30. Also, my Don't Trash Somersworth is winding down. We will meet this Saturday from 2 to 3. We'll meet at Citizens Bank. And we're cleaning up the downtown to get ready for the parade. And then I'll have one more after that in December, which actually falls right before Christmas. So if it's snowing, we will not meet. And then we won't meet again until April. I will not be going through the winter with my group. I know some of them will. But we'll start back up in April. So if there's any specific location that anybody thinks we should have gone to and we missed this year, please reach out to me and let me know. And so since my Don't Trash Somersworth is winding down, I will be trying to get off the ground another project. I know that surprises everybody. I'd like to start doing what's called blessing bags. And what they are are probably like one-gallon plastic bags, and they are to benefit the homeless, whether it's toothbrush, toothpaste, deodorant, water, granola bars. I will reach out to the people running the warming center and ask if they know of any specific needs. And I would like the bags sent up and leave them at the warming center for the folks to pick up and take home. So that's my next project I'll be doing. If anybody's interested in joining me, please reach out to me and let me know. And our last one, Hilltop City Festival of Lights. We're going to be doing a holiday lighting contest. I've already secured the first place prize. They can sign up through the Falls Chamber. I'd like to see at least 20 houses in this. And what we'll do is we'll have a map. You'll drive around and vote for your favorite house for the Festival of Lights. Thank you, Bonnie, for sharing this event with me. And that's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Counselor Barry?
So I will apologize now because I do have quite a few things to kind of go over. So sorry to all of you since I'm last. First off, I just want to say thank you to all of our veterans. I know I'm one day late, but since yesterday was Veterans Day, and I wanted to thank everybody who has served, but also the families who helped support you during your service. I know a lot of times they don't get recognition, but they do shoulder a lot during your time of service. So I also wanted to say thank you to them. Another quick reminder, Somersworth Historical Society and Museum is doing a lecture series, and the first one is going to be November 20, 6:00 p.m., about the Somersworth Fire Department, which I think is actually going to be really great. So I hope to see people get there and go to that. I also was able to go to the East Coast Evolution Leadership Meeting that was held. I was happy in some ways, but also very disappointed in other ways. I saw a lot of community partners there that will be working with the people running the warming center or who also work with people who will be utilizing that center. But I have to say, I was a little disappointed with the amount of, considering this is a tri-city effort, not a lot of city representatives there. So that was a little disappointing to me, very particularly, but I know people have lives, they have different things going on, but I would have liked to see a little bit more unity at that meeting for those who have voted on this, who are there to represent just one of my things. I know this was touched on a little bit earlier, but I've seen a lot of stuff going on ever since the election. I know Somersworth had an incident at one of our polls, which is very sad. These are volunteers. People come out to do things, and they should feel safe to do that, especially if they're going to be working at like volunteer warming centers, other things. So I just want to tell people, please try to have some respect, tolerance, just take a breath before you interact with people around this time of year. It's the holidays. There's going to be a lot of volunteering. There's going to be a lot of places that you can give. Do some good things. Try to do it locally. We can definitely use it in our local places. And then I just want to leave with a quote. "The problem with labels is that they lead to stereotypes, and stereotypes leads to generalizations, and generalizations lead to assumptions, and assumptions lead back to stereotypes. It is a vicious cycle." I've seen too much of it lately, and I would really like us all to move past it and work on getting to know individuals and not stereotypes.
Mayor? May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Considering it's my turn to go first this time, and I didn't really say anything, can I go first next time?
Two times in a row?
Think about it. Please just consider it. You're a good man. Consider it. Thank you.
All right, last but not least.
I vote no.
We do have Counselor Peppin for closing comments.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the voters that came out and voted. I think it's, whatever election is, I always think the city elections are more important than the federal and all the other elections because it affects you more than any other time. But I think it's very, very important for every election to have people come out and vote and voice their opinions and by casting the ballot. And I also like to thank the poll people that basically spent probably half the night here, and they do it every time, and for what they get for it, they might as well say they're doing it for nothing, just for dedication to us, the public. And I'd just like to say my sympathies to the Soldati family. Jennifer sat beside me. We've had a chance to talk during every council meeting, before council meetings, after council meetings. I've served on numerous committees, with her and stuff like that. And also the family. I know every November during election time, we're standing out there, and their family's standing out there. So you get to know the family also. So my sympathy is out to the whole family. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to Item 19, which is future agenda items. I have one that I want to flag, which is Counselor Peppin had asked that we look into potentially doing a change to our rules regarding restricting electioneering discussions. I informed Counselor Peppin that I wanted to just quickly get a legal opinion as to whether that was like a free speech impingement. I have been reassured that as long as we are restricting categories of speech, so that in this case, electioneering and talking about elections is not, therefore, I will be forwarding this to the Government Operations Committee to look into as to whether that's